Okay, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting on these public schools of January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And first order of business is interview questions. Jordan has, or his team. I'll be shot on feedback.
Yes, I believe you all have everything I need to copy. I think I'll pass them around.
Give that for coffee?
Yes, ask these things who needs one. Uh, Ben, so. Well, yeah, there we have piles. Um, so if there are any comments, questions, concerns, and address them. Otherwise, I think someone has to move to adopt them as our question set. And then we can proceed.
I'll move to adopt the um questions indicated in superintendent interview questions January eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. That's the questions for our superintendent interview process. How's that?
Oh, maybe. Any discussion? We're not just going to vote on them.
Hi.
All right. Well, we don't have any other business, so I think.
Unless he want to give Bob a chance to it, we don't know.
Yeah.
What his status is.
Oh, thank you, Brian.
I'm I'm good with what I got. Why do we wait three or four minutes if he's not sure it'll start earlier?
It's always the possibility he's at town hall.
Oh.
You got it? You guys number? Yeah.
Oh, me too.
He lives at school, so.
Yeah.
More or less.
It'd be frustrating if people all the way up to town hall. That was like.
But he's somebody who's.
And definitely have done that. She made her calls. To town hall. It was Lennox Library one time. They were.
Oh, yeah.
What are you doing?
Being a dice, but.
Set the library, like the principal library. So interesting now the advent soon because in the past. Do you know how many are?
But they're listening to every word.
Yeah.
If we have any other business, we can knock out.
Move to approve the budget.
What do you say? Like put it down to like sixteen million, sixteen, seventeen?
Money as we need. I know, I know, I know. Well, twenty-five million. How's that? I'm not making fun at all.
That's just for our cap.
Our safety building, our safety building is very important, so.
I did jotting frantic.
I did vote for it.
Uh, Bob is walking up now.
Does he come in?
Yes.
Or at least once.
At least.
If we keep it to once.
Should it take? For your safety. The regulations require that we.
I hear nothing. Not such a far.
As the kids skiing lessons.
It didn't start it. It's been it's there was so much snow in December and then it's been just mud. It's been pushed it back two weeks already.
Amazing. This is the worst.
Where are you this game?
What's that?
Where would where are you doing?
Is there an official reason it's bus gay or bus get?
But the prologue is probably my prologue started already.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay.
All right, I think we're ready.
Welcome.
Hello.
Brenda. Yep, this is again, thank you.
We are delighted to have Dr. Collins here in person for this conversation. The the search committee had the pleasure of speaking with him on Zoom from somewhere much warmer. Where he is on in the midst of a a year-long OD excursion with his family. Perhaps we can we'll talk about that a bit more, but really enjoyed getting to know him a little bit through that. And then I know a lot of folks have enjoyed getting the chance to to get to know you today. And he was the central office, Jess and and Morris as well. I guess we'll go around and introduce ourselves briefly and then uh jump right in.
Wonderful.
You have to add one interesting fact about yourself.
One interesting fact about myself. I use the hydraulic power pole.
That's wow, that is an interesting. How that could follow.
Megan Kirby, nice to see you again. A fact about yourself. Oh, wow.
It can just be that you have three kids in school.
How about I've never eaten meat my entire life? Yeah. Wow, anyway. We're making the hardest friends builds around the jail.
I'm Christine Morrow, school committee member of the past seven years, parents of two students at Morris Elementary. Don't have anything as exciting. I just must say I love to ski and rock climb. I do a little sailing, but I don't not at your level.
I'm Bob Vaughn, the school committee chairman, and forty-three years ago or so, I was inside the Great Pyramid.
Uh, David Remler, I'm the parent of an eleven-year-old and a fourteen-year-old. Oh, man, I'm tired and I can't imagine anyone with younger kids. And I've been in the middle of your thirty, forty years.
Hi, I'm Brian Fenton. I raised three students through Lennox, graduated. I think you already know a little fun fact about me, just I love to bake, so hopefully I will cook heat is pointing I drop some off. And.
I'm Lauren Cast, the school committee, and now regret the interesting fact assignment because everyone had more interesting facts than I do. I have kids ten, eight, and three all at Morris, and we watch Cars one, two, or three roughly once a day. That's.
All three is a special day?
Well, you have to have a lot of people sick in the house for that. Cars two was a miss. Cars three, they really, I think, stepped it up again. My sense. So I think we have about an hour and fifteen minutes. Want to sort of kick off with or invite you to talk a little about yourself, background, interest in the position. As you know, you know, residency is is an important issue for us, so be good to understand your commitment and and how you'd see yourself integrating into the community. Have a bunch of questions we'll all ask. Follow up some then closing statement at the end or whatever we should have gotten to, but but didn't.
Perfect. Right, so Bill Collins had over twenty years of educational leadership experience from pre-K right through graduate school. And I heard resoundingly today the residency stability question. As I currently live in a boat and don't have a home, I can relocate anywhere. And I am looking for my my next job to be the one that takes me right through to retirement. And I'm, you know, I I feel that I have a good number of years ahead of me and and a lot to give. So my experiences, I've why why Lennox, my my experiences are and and skill set. Or a good fit. Every I think everyone that gets into education does it because they they really want to make a difference. They want to give back. And so in searching for districts, I think then we'll look at places that could use my skill set where I would be able to do that. And as, you know, thinking that this would be my last. I was five years in the previous district, nine years in the district for that, you know, looking to have this be my last district, you know, I really want to be in a situation where I where I finish up my leadership career strong and and in place where I can where I can make. And 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 that was reinforced today as I met with students and staff, parents, administrators. Believe that I I believe that I have a lot to offer, and I'm sure your questions will sort of bear that out. But so uh right after college, I went into law enforcement. I was at the deputy sheriff in some county, but from there to Procter and Gamble where ours is business. Each I don't think a- any experience is lost, you know, even those those weren't careers that I ended up pursuing for a lifetime. No experiences lost. So I learned how to handle myself very calmly under pressure when I was in the bar. And I I learned a lot of great business strategies when I worked for Procter and, and just outstanding grand. From from there, I became guidance counselor, then an assistant principal, and then a principal. Went to higher ed and led the educational leadership program at St. Lawrence University, was an assistant professor there. And then became a and then became a superintendent. We promised my younger daughter that we would not move her again until after she had graduated. Which finds us now in this transition, knowing that it was coming back to Massachusetts, the perfect time to take a sailing year, sabbatical, a gap year with with my daughter. Several. Needs me to be here.
Okay. I just didn't, I just want to see, can can people hear? I feel like the blowers are kind of loud, so.
Oh, I can I can speak.
No, just as a little stage, we've got, I just, from what I can tell, I wonder if I could be able to hear. I'm sitting here, so I can hear you, but
Sure.
Maybe it's a little bit loud.
Absolutely.
Just.
Educator voice.
Okay.
All right, so I believe you have a question in front of you, but we will also be reading them out loud for the audience. And I have the first question. As you have had the opportunity to learn more about our district, what stands out to you as our unique assets and challenges? How do you see your particular skill set working effectively for us? And why do your skills match our needs?
Okay, so uh um assets, you have an incredibly dedicated and loyal staff, teachers. They are very committed to the success of the students and this district. That was that was quite evident. You have a broader community that supports the schools, that votes overwhelmingly to support school budgets. And that is not, that is not the case in a lot of places. You're you're doing so many things well with the student test scores. You're really rocking that uh as well. You have some transitions or challenges. You've got some transition in your leadership. And you've had that. Uh, one of the, one of the things that I believe that I've proven in my previous positions is that you can you you can take my word to the bank. So if I end up being the candidate and you offer me a contract for a certain amount of years, and I say that that is what I will do, that's what I will do. I think that one of the other things is that with new administrators, I authored, co-authored a textbook on teacher leadership and culture. This is a real strength for me, mentoring, having run the, having run the graduate leadership program at St. Lawrence University, preparing teachers to become principals and principals to become superintendents. That's right in my wheelhouse, the mentoring of of administrators, the support and building capacity of administrators. That is, that's a definite strength that I would that I would bring. And I I have some conversant in research on the topic and understand and understand what what that means. So when I look at what what you need, you need, you need stability, someone who understands how to build and support culture. One of the things that I gathered in speaking with students and staff is having their voices be heard. I believe that I have demonstrated that time and time again in every place that I have worked. And yeah, and then the and then the longevity piece of having that your research suggests that someone who stays fewer than three years doesn't make sustainable change, and I'm about sustainable change.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
What does good management mean to you? What is your management style? And how will it help you be an effective leader, especially in a district of this size?
Okay, so I see, can can folks hear me? Yes, thank you. Can I? I see management and leadership as two distinct things, right? You manage things and you lead people. So and there are times when a leader needs to certainly revert to being strictly a manager. Sometimes it's a crisis and you just have to dictate what's going to happen. But most of the time, a leader is leading people. So the management piece is, right? Do the right to the buses, to the buses run on. Are the are the systems in place and are the and are the systems working? And can somebody recognize how to make systemic change and keep it sustainable? Systems thing, big picture thing, yes. But leadership really is a is is more about building a climate and a culture. And my, so the question is about, you know, what is my style and how will I, yeah, and how will it help me to be an effective leader? So my style is to foster and build capacity. And this is what I've done every place that I have been. One of the reasons that I took the job at St. Lawrence to lead the educational leadership program was because I had so many teachers come through from my school and others do their internship in my school for me to for them to get their administrative certification. When I was at St. Lawrence, I created something called the Principals Academy. It's highly, it was highly successful. And we had international speakers and leaders in their field come and work with our principles. We took our principles down to Harvard. We took our principles to to Canada. We were close, but we took our principles to Canada to see world-class to see world-class school districts that were being modeled for what they're able to accomplish. So what, how will my management style help me be effective leader? I uh my philosophy is to praise publicly, and if there's criticisms or corrections, they happen, they happen in private. There shouldn't be anybody, student, teacher, administrator, no one's dignity should ever be deemed. We should be modeling what what that is. Again, when I was at, when I was at Southampton, there had been two, prior to my arrival, there'd been two school buildings that had merged into one. And when I arrived, there were still two distinct faculties. And and I was able to merge them into one cohesive faculty. And it was a, it was a wonderful culture for for students and student learning. And we opened up for school of choice and had long, long waiting lists. When we opened up, when we would open up a position for a teaching position, we would get teachers from neighboring schools knowing that they would lose their tenure to start over with us. But because of the culture that their teacher friends had told them about, they would apply. We had lots of applications for veteran teachers to come over with us. So I think building a, yeah, building, building a a healthy culture. And again, especially in a district this size, it's kind of the question, my, most of my experience and expertise has been in districts that are this size or small. You're welcome.
Can I ask you just to follow up on something you said?
Sure.
You said your style is fostering and building capacity?
Yes.
Can you expand on the, which meant by capacity?
Sure. So I I have high expectations. But the onus is on the leader to make sure that you're not asking anything without building the capacity to meet that. So I can't have expectations that administrators are going to do X, or teachers are going to do X, or students are going to do X. If there if if I'm not willing to build that capacity, and building that capacity may mean professional development, it may mean mentoring, it may mean training. It 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 could mean a different program for for students or preparation, program of studies, but to build the capacity to meet the expectation, because it is unfair to say, you know, here's my expectation, but you're not going to, I'm not going to provide that training to you. To get.
Good, thank you.
Your work. And one of the related questions, look up to know a little bit more about how you approach situations where someone's not not meeting the expectations or, you know, having made the investments, it's clear that you're not going to fill capacity. How do you sort of, how do you evaluate that situation or or make that call at that point?
It is, it's I I've had to do it. I've had to do it several times in during my career, and it is never easy. Most of the time, it's, it is candid conversations, and it shouldn't come as a surprise. So whoever should have been coached and working on building capacity, and there are benchmarks that the person should be trying to reach. And and then it should become very obvious to them as well that despite all that support, they're not, they're not reaching. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a surprise but when that, when that has to happen, oftentimes the just through that coaching experience, they will recognize that, you know, sort of being coached to to move on, it isn't a good fit. For those folks that don't get that, and you know, and here's i- i- in the job that I had before, after I got it, they said, you know, one of the conversations they had afterwards is they said, gee, he seems really nice. You know, does that equate to being soft? And and it doesn't, right? But you can be nice and respectful and still do what you're hired to do. Right? And sometimes, and sometimes it's very difficult, and I don't have a problem shying away from from what's difficult. But in a way to try to do it as respectfully as possible. And 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 sometimes that includes not usually, it's, you know, within within some probationary period that you discover that they're not. They may not be cut out for this, or it's just not a good fit. And I I've, and I have worked with the folks before to have them have some sort of parachute. Maybe there is another place that we think it might work. They could try it somewhere else. And and I and I do my best to help them with that.
Can you give us an example of an organizational change you made in the past? For instance, in the composition of your team, for instance, in the composition of your team, or in the roles or in their roles responsibilities? Why did you make the change? How did you plan it? And what was the outcome?
When I was at Parishville, Hopton is the superintendent. The the north country, the the region that the school was in has since the mid-seventies been losing enrollment. I liken it to a plane that's losing altitude. It's it's was losing one to one and a half percent of the student enrollment across across the area a year. And our school saw that as well. And so there was a time when it made sense to have two principals. When one of our principals got a job as an assistant superintendent in a district that had an assistant superintendency, we didn't. I met with the school board, and we discussed my recommendation of moving to a principal for the whole building and an assistant principal. And it was, it was a change, but it really made sense. We had got to an enrollment size that having two principals, we were a pre-K to twelve central school, one school. And it didn't make, it didn't make sense. And so I met with the administrative team, I met with the school board. We we looked at the demographics, I met with the business manager, we discussed the pros and cons of this, and then moved to and then moved to this and rolled out our reasoning and rationale to the to the parents. And because of the reputation of our district, we attracted a veteran principal, came and decided that she would take an assistant principal role to work as part of our administrative team. So it ended up, we got, we got that expertise. And and really positioned the schools, it moves forward with the shrinking.
Talk, I may follow up on that. So so in in that type instance, how does that change come about? I mean, you saw a need from it for it. And 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 in the context of the community. How 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 was that change? How how was that change? What was done to sort of make it successful and make it a a a smooth one?
Well, uh, there had been a call when when I first arrived, there had been a call. Members of the community, do you really need, do you really need two principals? And and when I first came in, I said, look, I'm not going to step in the door and make a change of this nature. But it made sense when one of the principals left to then to then revisit that. As I said, it's the board, that's what we'll do. We'll revisit, we'll revisit this when we get that opportunity. And we did. And and the community, the community was, I think, pleased to see that the that the school was responsive to the the enrollment side. And we still didn't really lose capacity. We had two bodies in there, but to have two separate principals, one for the elementary and one for, in that situation, didn't. It just, yeah, it really wasn't born and didn't make a lot of sense. And having one person unite that faculty seemed to seem to make sense. And we had a very strong principal who is actually now the superintendent. Let me answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I think I'm up next. Also, in sort of the management vein, wanted to ask how you go about creating a culture of accountability? Or what your approach is to holding your own team accountable? And then as importantly, how do you ensure that they bring that same accountability to the teachers and staff throughout the district?
It, so it starts with everybody knowing. It being very clear and everybody knowing what are they accountable, for what are they accountable? And that's the, that's the initial work, is what are we holding people accountable for? And once we have gone through collectively, gone through that. Right of, okay, we've identified where we are and where we want to be. And we, and then we come up with objectives to, to get to where we need to go and, and uh and benchmarks along the way. And then we make them smart goals, right, that, that they are s- specific and manageable and timely. Uh and, and it shouldn't be top down, it should be an agreed, agreed upon thing and then uh check ins along the way. And um sometimes the best laid plans. Right, there may be very valid reasons why they fell short. And if there are, then we make your course corrections and if not, we say, well, why did that not happen? You were going to do X number of evaluations and that didn't happen, why, right? Well, because of all these things that, all these things that, well, okay, or. Yeah, I just didn't get to it, well, it's uh two very different, two very different conversations. Um and I think that the, the principals, who I've said in every meeting I've had today, is that they're the locus of control. Right? So your billing succeeds or fails on the principal, the superintendent can set a tone and create. The collective school vision and share that out, but ultimately it's being implemented by the school. Principal, they are the ones that are interacting with the students, the parents and the teachers on a daily basis. So um the same then holds true for them and their work with. With the, with the teachers, so when you say accountability, what does collectively? What is that school, they, they look at their data now, say data, right, so you can be dripped where your data rich and information poor. Data is only as good as how, how well you can interpret, right? So we get lots of data, you've got lots of data. And we make sure that the staff are informed consumers of that, that they can, they know. What does this data mean? What is the data that we're focusing on? And then, and then their. Their goals are set out by their building principal and uh and they're to be held, held accountable for them. And then the exact same thing happens, there are often very good reasons why a goal may fall short. And, and we certainly look into that. But if, to, to get to what I think you want to get to is, yes. Accountability is, is important because if you're not holding anyone accountable, right? Where, you know, where you, where you're headed and where you're going, if you're not measuring, um it's. Uh yeah, it's hard to figure out what your improvement is or um or is not, so. But I do think that it needs to be collaborative. Um it isn't, it definitely isn't top down and, and again, from the meetings today, I've heard loud and clear, right? We do a, we do a really good job. Training us in what, in, in what we need to do and we will get it done, your, your folks are standing on the starting block. Eager to, eager to take Linux to the next level, whatever that.
Uh follow up on that answer, when you were superintendent. And understanding how important the principals are, how often did you um meet with them and assess their performance?
Uh so, uh very small school district, uh I'm, I interacted with the principals. Every single day, it wouldn't have been a day unless. You know, uh unless I was at a conference, I'm saying it wouldn't have been a day that I wouldn't have interacted with the, with the principals. And we were, we were doing constant check-ins, we had a number of, we had a number of. Focus points that we were working on, uh and then of course, COVID changed our, yeah. COVID kind of changed, we, we sort of went to a management system, let me speak of management and leadership of, okay. How are we gonna get students, what do we need to do? Um and uh we ended up meeting with. Administration, I ended up meeting with the staff ahead of the situation that we foresaw coming. And because we did that, we were actually very well, uh very well situated when, when COVID came. And we're the only district out of the eighteen districts in our county um that wasn't forced. To close because of a COVID outbreak. We, we certainly, we did close. So there was a state of emergency, we did close for a while, but we were never, we, everything we did was controlled. We were never forced to make the call to parents, hey, we don't have the staff or.
Next question is for me, um you talked about this a little bit at the beginning, so just ask you to expand on a little bit. Of how you've engaged with professionals outside of your school community um to broaden your network and scholarship. So if you were coming here, for example, you've been a whole new community of education leaders. And how do you like to go about doing that? And then um so give us some examples of ways in which these networks have guided. Your leadership in education and how that might look.
I have, uh I've always made it a, a point to uh. Meet and know the. Other town department leaders before I ever need to call them. I don't want my first interaction to be when the fire chief rolls up, right? I, I want to, I want to have that relationship ahead of, you know, same way with the, the, the police and uh finance. It's, it is important to build the relationships before, uh really, before you need that and have those relationships. So uh and I've, e- every place I've been. I have done that, when I've come in, I've made sure that I went and met or had them come to the school, explain. What we were about to learn from them, what was their previous experience with the school, their interaction, um what would they like to see ideally? Explain what I would hope to see, thinking. And uh and then when something does happen, I mean, call upon them, I'm not, you know, I'm not a stranger, but it's never meant by. But it's, uh it is, it's face to face meetings. And usually not, you know, and usually not just one, but repeated. Repeated meetings, uh and oftentimes, if there's an opportunity to bring somebody in to the school. To, to celebrate and educate what they do for our students, that's a nice.
Okay, I think some of what I also was thinking in terms of was in the sense that being in the Berkshire community, being a home to community.
Yes.
So really also think about the education, the education community, sort of others, you know, other superintendents, colleges, whatever, how. I mean, I ha- I can anticipate some of it, because I've seen your resume, I know you've worked at higher education, so what, what would your thought be about how you would? Broaden that network, I think that's also what I meant, but your question was great and your answer was great.
Thank you, um yeah, so to be part of the round table, the superintendents. Be part of the superintendent's round table, it's really important to network, it is important to be part of the professional organizations. Or superintendents, um because that is often where you. Discover what other school districts may be doing or how they're, they, they may have a challenge they're facing that may be coming. Down the pike. Um and, and isn't, isn't yet, so I've always been active in. When I was a principal, I was very active in the principal association, I was a superintendent, I was active in the superintendent's association. Uh and then certainly having been a, uh having been in higher ed. As an assistant professor, the, the higher ed connections and making those. And making those relationships uh is really important and asking them the questions and this is. When the local university, uh state university was going to put in. Um and a leadership program, uh they'd asked me to be the external reviewer for that. Uh I worked very closely with them, I was on their, I was on their accreditation board. Um I've worked very closely and, and I think it's a duty of the schools to, to speak to. Particularly the schools that are uh preparing leaders. Uh or preparing teachers that, okay, this is what we're seeing, you know, we're seeing our student teachers can't do this and this and this. And giving them that feedback, we owe them that and it only makes the, it makes the whole cycle um better. Because we get teachers that are better trained or leaders that are better trained. Um and they make their program uh more responsive to when they're.
Thank you, okay, so to a segue, yeah, yes, you've also talked somewhat about this next question, but I, I really want to focus on. The teacher, you know, how you're working with the next generation of teacher leaders, uh should be leadership. So how do you cultivate the next generation of teacher leaders? Explain what you've done with group performance, make superior staff out of average performance.
Uh so, the teacher leader pieces, what I co-authored that textbook about was, um was how principals can. Can foster and support and cultivate teacher leaders. One of the interesting things about when a teacher is in their profession. Uh is that partway through, right, they get maybe three quarters of the way through and. Unless they're gonna go into administration or move to another, there's, there are not a lot of opportunities for them. And they've been doing the same thing for a long time, so tapping into teacher passion. Tapping into things that they're good at, tapping into things that are gonna jazz them. To reignite why they get into this in the, in the first place. And one of the ways is um. Some of the best ideas have come from staff. And having, I found that having the propensity for yes, when someone comes in, a lot of times. Uh leaders get kind of worn down and they have a propensity to say, no, no, I don't think we can, we don't have the funding or we don't have the manpower. We don't, we can't, we can't make that happen, but having the propensity for yes, leaving the door open. That is big and when that person speaks to other teachers, they're like, yeah, he's receptive, share your idea. And I have a theory, right, uh the, you know, the theory is that out of the thousand, maybe harebrained ideas. Right, there's a hundred that are plausible and there's ten that are. Really pretty good and out of that, you know, maybe you get, you get that gem, but not that I would have come up with it. But it comes from, that it comes from the staff, so how do you reignite that passion? I was able to do it in my previous district, we had uh a teacher. That this, that uh I had a conversation, I had a conversation with the teacher because. We allowed parent input, they didn't get to say who their um, who their next year's teacher was gonna be. But they did get to say, gee whiz, this is someone I really don't want, I don't think, you know, I don't think it'd be a good match, I had another child, but for whatever. And we had a teacher, an outstanding teacher, who uh half of the upcoming class said. We don't want her. So I, I brought her in and I said, you're, in my estimation, you're, you're probably one of the most talented teachers. Half of the upcoming class have asked not to have you. Why would that be? What's occurring in your class, right? And it was a place of, it was a place of not a lot of joy and for the remainder of that year, because it happened toward the end of the year, the teacher didn't talk to me. But the next year, right, we had, the next year, the teacher came back, had thought about it, right? And we found a way for this teacher to be an instructional coach, to share their passion. And I walked by this very joyful classroom. There's the, right, there's the, there's the passion, this is, this person very passionate about this, was able to share it. And it renewed their love of what they were doing and their classroom, because they're a part in the classroom and part uh instruction approach. Um and their classroom benefited from them. So finding ways and for another teacher, it was mentoring, the teacher was passionate about mentoring. I sent the teacher out, they got training in New Mexico, allowed uh mentoring and um uh came back and became the. Uh the person who's spearheading our marvelous mentoring program. And then when I left, they became uh, they became the mentoring person for the whole region. And, and is still consulting in mentoring, it was a passion that they had and had not tapped into the passion. You know, perhaps they just would have, you know, been in their, been in their classroom, but that's part of the way to get back, I guess.
Can I follow up on that? So I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking about the hierarchy and, and of, of the way a, a school exists. With, with the teachers, principals, superintendent, how do you? So there's a layer between you and, 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 and let's say the instructor and how do these gems come to you?
Yeah.
How do they, do they come to the principal, do they come to you? What's the, what's the, the environment that's created that allows? This person to know that.
So, so it should be, so it should be the principal, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be. Right, I shouldn't be cutting the principal off at the knees, I shouldn't be having a pathway where people bypass. The principal, right, so the, but, but the principal should have. Should be, should be empowered to be able to say, that's a great idea and let's bring, let's bring Bill in. Right, let's have, let's have a further conversation because I know, you know, I, I don't know how perhaps we get there. But let's explore that for, what a great idea, and if the principal is saying, no way, uh-uh. Right, it's, it, it impacts the culture and again, some of the very best ideas are coming from the people who've been doing this job for a long time. And no matter how long I stay, I'm the transitional person, like your teachers are here for their whole career. Right, so how do we, right, how do we excite and jazz them? How do we support them? How do we have them know that their ideas are going to be listened to? And if in the end, it turns out that we don't have the money or we can't make it happen, at the very least, they have had. The opportunity to, to share this and think about it, right? And even if we end up putting in a drawer until, you know, somebody writes the right grant, so.
Just to follow up on David's question, maybe in a much more tactical vein, there's, there's sort of, I guess there could be two schools of thought. There's maybe there's a balance between them of superintendents in the central office, the principals are the leaders of the buildings. I sort of have to stay out of their way versus it's great to have the superintendent around, walk around and say hi to everybody every day. I, I don't think there's a right answer, but very curious what your approach and style is and how you go about that.
So you, uh the leader is eighty percent more effective when they step over the threshold of their office. Situational awareness is the number one, is the number one lever for a leader making a difference. Right, I'm never gonna be situationally aware if I'm spending all my time at the town hall, it just isn't gonna happen. Right, I need to step over that, at the same time, it is, right? You, I certainly don't want to uh usurp, right, the, the principal. My job is to, again, build capacity, to foster and support the principal. But to be, to be seen, to be present. Right, and where the superintendent spends their time speaks volumes. More than anything I could say here in an interview, it was, it's, it's where, so in my previous district, I was fortunate enough to have my office in the school. It wasn't removed, so I was able to meet students every single day and greet them. And as they walked to the door, I say, hey, great job last night at the game, right? Or I really, I saw your artwork in the hallway, nice. Um to have them know that there is a caring adult, that the person who's in charge of the district cares, right? And is, has interest in them and what they're doing. Uh I think it, it pays, it pays great, it pays great dividends in. There then uh opening up and feeling that this community and the school is, is theirs and is there for them. At the same time though, um there is a delineation between what a principal does and what a superintendent does. And um and it, and it's set up that way for. It's set up that way for, so I think that can I be present? Can I be supportive? Can I know students and teachers well? Absolutely. And then talk about situational awareness. When the principal calls and says, hey, you know, this issue's coming up to your way. I can say, yeah, right? We saw this brewing over the last couple. I understand, I know, right? Or I, I, I've seen this, or I know that person. I get it. Versus them having to explain to me. The whole situation and, and why this problem is moved from their desk.
Now we're to turn to curriculum. Tell us about your experience working with curriculum, for instance. Assessing curriculum in place, identifying a need to revise curriculum or implementing new curriculum. What did you learn from these experiences and how would you use what you have learned?
I've had a lot of. Again, being in small districts, uh I've. I've had a lot of work with. A lot of work with selecting programs and I don't do it. I've never done it in isolation. I include the people who are gonna be implementing the program. So I'll have a committee. Uh, all the committee of teachers. And. Oftentimes, the conversation will be, you know, this particular program, we're not seeing the results. Is it because we're not doing it with fidelity? Is it because this program is not the best fit for us? What? What is that? We make a determination. And then from there, if we decide. That this is the program for us. Um, then we talk about, okay. What, you know, what sort of parameters do we need to do? Does everyone, does everyone need to teach ninety minutes of? Ninety minutes of literacy? Okay, is that what we need to do? Right? And we would, you know, look at research and we, uh, when I was, when I was principal. Uh, we had um math. We, we were revisiting, we were revisiting math. Uh, and then, and the math textbooks and such. And we ended up in the library with a. Big roll of poster paper and yarn and tape. And we laid out every one of the, every one of the learning standards. And then we would take that string from that learning standard and put it to what our current, what our current math. Did our current math program address? These and we had this massive spider web of, of, right? And we decided that, no. It didn't, it didn't address. We, you know, we had this, but it wasn't addressing. It wasn't addressing what we needed to address. So then we put a committee of math teachers together. And we got samples of different schools that were doing very well in math of what they were using. And we brought that in and we spent the better part of a year going through, going through those programs. Uh, and looking at what would work best in our district for us. Uh, it was very labor intensive, but the idea again was to have buy-in and that the people who are going to have to. Implement this feel that it wasn't and know that it wasn't top-down. They were part of the decision made. And what they were using was what we collectively had decided to use.
So a little bit of a segue, but I will, um, this is, the next question is. Your experience, I think you're certainly your teacher and some of your leadership experience was in elementary, as we talked about, then middle schools. By the way, graduated Sutherland High School. Right? Works in Pembroke, um, but had been here for twenty nine years. So what does that matter? Um, but anyway, I saw this, wait, um, but looking at elementary and middle school. Granted, a superintendent doesn't necessarily come from all veins, but I think there's a real. Question and desire for some answers about curriculum in the high school. Uh, we do pride ourselves on some. Pretty strong curriculum with teachers who really prepare students, but we also. They, they kind of wanna know, how would you approach high school curriculum? So that's um. Question eight. And then, um, yeah, so some focus on high school curriculum instruction. And some challenges in high schools that might be unique from what you've done in elementary and middle.
My, yeah, and my. My last district, again, central school, um, pre-K through, through high school. Uh, the, the. I was able to hire and. An amazing veteran, uh, veteran principal and. While I, while I was his sounding board and he consulted me. Um, he did a lot of the instructional leadership work with, uh, with. The teachers directly. And we would have, again, we spoke daily. Um, but it, but it was. It was his role to be the instructional leader and me to make sure that he got uh. Everything he needed to be able to do that. And I tried a, a lot not to, having been a very successful principal. It's easy to then come in and take those skills that got you to be the very. Successful principal and, and want to apply them in a role as superintendent, which is, is distinct. From that. So I have curriculum. I have experienced analyzing curriculum and uh. And looking at new programs. And again, most of it, most of it is in middle and most of it's middle and elementary. But when I was the superintendent. Uh, really, I worked. I worked with the principals who I specifically wanted to be seen as their instruction leader. And. And again, my job, I didn't have to build a lot of capacity there because I. Again, was able to hire an amazing, this was not a superintendent, but an amazing principal. We had that, um, we had that capacity.
So in summary, it's. Looking for the strength in your team, looking for the person that really has that strength um to support.
If, if they didn't, I, right, and I don't, I, I certainly could have. Uh, I could have done that work, but if I was meeting with his departments, his teams. I, I wouldn't, I feel like I would have been usurping him as, again, as the instructional leader in my job. And moving toward getting that assistant principal in was, was a two-step, was a two-step piece because the assistant principal then took. Most of the majority of the discipline issues. Um, off, off of his plate and allowed him to rise up to be that instruction leader and to. Right? And to shape. Uh, and to sh- to shape that and be seen that way by his. By his staff. But supporting, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, next, question about budgets.
All right.
What's your experience with repairing budgets? And how do you set priorities during the budget problem?
So the budget is never just the budget, it's never independent of, of what's happening in the school. Uh, whatever the priorities and the goals of the district are. This, it's tied hand in hand with the budget. Uh, and so when a budget is being built. And there's something is proposed, oh, let's do X, Y, Z. Does it move us closer to our goals or not, right? Because there's a finite amount of, uh, there's a finite amount of money and certainly a finite amount of time. And the budget needs to, the. We should be able to say. Respond to the taxpayers. Yes. This is in the budget because this supports. What we're doing. This is part of our goals of where we want to be and where we see ourselves. So, uh, yeah, when I was in Southampton, I. I built the budget because even though it was a regional school district, they had their own school committee just for my school. So I dealt with the school committee, I dealt with the finance board. I was the person that went to the town meeting and um presented the budget. I have a lot of, I have a lot of experience. Uh, creating budgets and having them uh and having them be sound and, and make. Uh, and make sense and be tied to what we're trying to accomplish in, in the school and to be able to articulate. That and why we're doing that. And if we are asking for an increase, um, why we're asking for an increase. Uh, and then the same thing. In my, uh, in my most recent district, uh, again, I would work. I would work with. The. The principals. They each. When there were two principals, uh, they each had to uh come up with um. What was on their, what was on their list of what, what we needed and, you know, what they, what they saw. And then I would sit down with the, with the finance. The finance director and we would, you know, as a group and we would go through this. Sort of, uh, small school, we'd go through sort of line by line and say, does this, does this make sense and, and not? And then it was really important. There were times when I, I, there were things that I couldn't support, but I would put it out in front of the town. I would say. We need an English teacher, but we recognize the situation, you know, where we are right now financially, we can't. Add that, but I want you to know that this is a position that we need and you're going to see it again. And I, I didn't want you to be surprised down the road that we're asking for this because we are gonna ask for this. This is important and it'll bring us to our full complement of, of teachers, et cetera. Um, but, yeah, and, and having, oftentimes having the, the things that we feel that we need. Show up even when we're not asking for them in that particular budget is important. And they see that we're not just pulling these things out of thin, thin air, but we have a plan and we. We want, this is part of the plan to move forward. Um, but you also have to gauge, you know, where is the. Right? Where is the, the, the appetite of the town at that point to, and is there something? In this case, they were getting a brand new fire station. So. You know, we pulled back that year. Um, but then, you know, with the hope that in future years, we get the support of the firepower, recognizing, you know, what we.
How long did your budget in?
Twelve minutes.
The students did have?
We, when I left, we were about three sixty seven.
I have a um. Follow-up question. Well, so you mentioned in your, your opening remarks that we're very fortunate to um. Have strong support from the town and, and voters for our school budget when we go to town meeting. My question is, have you ever encountered an alternative scenario where you did not enjoy such support? And if so, how did you work through that?
I've, I've never, I've never had a budget I presented shut down. No, I, I like to believe because I'm presenting a. A reasonable, realistic budget, have met with, have met with the finance committee and other department heads before it ever. Rolls out. So there, again, there aren't, there aren't surprises that I'm collaborative in my thinking, but the both of our. Both districts um did very, did very well. But I, you know, I've never been in a situation where we didn't. Uh, we didn't have a budget pass. They had that happen before I was there. Um, went to a contingency budget. But I, I've never had just.
One more question on that. The process of coming into the budget, how much time do they? Take from your experience? Like, what's a good amount of time to start working on the budget to finance the budget?
So as a superintendent, you usually have a foot in each, you have, you have a foot in each fiscal year, your current fiscal year and. And your next fiscal year, you are always thinking about, okay, right, what? How, what's the impact? What are we gonna need next? So you're, you're always thinking about it, but officially sitting down and rolling up our sleeves, um. I wanna say is, uh, it was like a, I think a three and a half month. It was a three and a half month process from the preliminary uh conversations. Through to the buzzet, budget presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I think we've arrived at the free-for-all portion program. Very exciting. Uh, we need like a confetti. Organized and disciplined free throw. I, folks have other follow-ups or things they wanted to hit on.
Um, so my next question is roughly been a town that our district that focuses heavily on academics. So I'm wondering if you can talk to us a little bit about what you would do to support students that might explore non-cultured.
So I feel, I feel that the school, the school district's responsibility. Is to have students have options. So when they, when they graduate. Maybe they decide, you know, maybe they've taken a path of, they, they want to. You know, go into the trades or the military or uh write in to, uh. Uh, write into a career. But we shouldn't, they shouldn't be tracked and we shouldn't limit their options. If they change their mind, we should have them prepared so that they could then still. Go on to college if that's what they wanted to do. We shouldn't be limiting, we shouldn't be limiting options. Uh, some of the countries in the, in the piece of the international study of how nations do. Some of those countries that outperform the United States. They will track students when the student decides, you know, somewhere in. Lake middle school that they want to be a plumber or something. They're not counting. We count. Everybody. That's part of what public education is about. We are the great. Equalizer. It's a. I mean, it's a foundation of our democracy. It's one of the things that we do, um, that we do really well and we shouldn't, and we shouldn't. Limit or track students. And in my previous district, we ended up moving the advanced courses around so students that were taking, were going out half a day for vocational training. Could come back and still take an advanced placement course. Because prior to that, the advanced placement courses were taking place while they were out of the building. Like, well, wait a minute. Now we're tracking. Now they no longer have that option. Figure it out, right? Um, and, yeah, and we were able to, and we were able to do that. And some of our vocational students were actually some of our highest performing students. And because they wanted to, you, because that's where their, their passion was, it didn't, it, it. It shouldn't be somehow related that they're not as academically um, uh, equipped as others. Important.
Uh, I, I have a question, um, from one of your references, um, from Mr. Zoliger.
The former board president, yes.
So, um. He, he alludes to. Some, so, some challenges that, that, that you face. Um, he, he comments that you handled them with plum. And, and, and he talked about serious personnel issues um. That were placed under a, a very uh high level of public scrutiny. And, and you know, and he loses to the fact that, um, this is happening in, in a close knit. Community, uh, but he, he talks about. Your integrity and grace and, and uh, can you explain, can you expand on, on, on what he's referring to?
I can. It's a, so it's a, it's a. It's a personnel issue. So this, I, I will try to give you as much. Um, even though I'm no longer there, I respect that. But, uh. We, actually during my tenure there, there were, there were a couple of them and, and they had them, right? So, uh, uh, a teacher, a probationary teacher made some poor decisions um outside of school. Some interactions with students that. I consulted three different attorneys and they were unanimous in that I had to let. The teacher go. The teacher was a favorite amongst students. They, they really enjoyed this teacher. I could not share with them what the teacher had done. The board knew, um, the attorneys. You know, had advised me and the board. Uh, and so I had to let the probationary. Teacher go. Even the, even the teachers association understood that there was a line that was crossed and you just can't cross that. So the teacher. Crossed that line. And a number of the students uh decided to protest that. Uh, decided to protest that. Um, they were very upset that I had let this popular teacher go, but there wasn't a lot. Uh, there wasn't a lot that I could share with them. Um, the. The teacher had, uh, a narrative to save face. That was different from reality. Um, and it kind of fueled it a little bit. Uh, and, uh. But I think that the, you know, the, the students were exercising. They were, they were, they, as young adults were exercising. What, what they thought felt was an injustice without knowing all the facts. And they were, and they were. Peacefully exercising their protest to that. So it was, there was a learning experience. Right? Um, and. Um, and, you know, and, and over time it passed and the teacher who replaced that teacher was. I, I think even more loved. And, and perhaps even, you know. A, a better education.
You know, there's a line, there's one line in this that, that he puts here that's on it. I, I don't know what to make of it. And, and he talks about, you know, placing the good at the school above, placing the good at the school above your own ego. I, I, I don't know how to process that.
Yeah, um, there was, uh, in addition, in addition to that, uh. There was an administrator when I came in who was being, uh, counseled by the previous superintendent, superintendent in the middle of the year. Got a. Got a, a better job and left. I appreciate that, right? I mean, they. Okay, uh, and I. They had an interim. Um, and then I, and then I came in and so the, the administrator got to skate a bit with the interim. Yeah. And then I came in, I had met with the outgoing superintendent. And he'd made it very clear that, you know, it was coaching it and it, it, it didn't come about. And, and probationary person and, and again, I, I didn't shy away from that, but. That was. You know, that was another. Another time when people, the community didn't know all of the. Didn't know all the details and all of the things that. That person had or hadn't done. And so I was, uh, for a little bit, um. You know, beat up on social media and people came to school committee meeting and, um, school board meeting and, and beat up me a little, but. Um, recognizing that it was, it would have been, it would have been easy to look the other way. Right? In that case, it would have been easy, but it wasn't what was in the best interest of. Of students. And I think that's what he's referring to in putting my ego aside and letting me, I guess I get paid to do. I took the lumps. Right? And made it clear to the community, this isn't on the school board. This is, right, I'm, right, I am the, I'm the leader, I'm the leader of this. District as decision that I made and I own it. And they weren't happy with it and, um. Over time, I think people came, it was early in my tenure, but I think over time people came to. To realize that I was going to continually do what was in the best interest of school, even if it. Even if it wasn't necessarily in, um, you know, easy or in my best interest.
Can I, can I follow up on that? Cause that's a really great, um, example, I think, because here it's really hard to know. We know things will come at you. So it's really hard for us to know how to respond. So in following up, when you had upset students. Or upset community members about a couple of decisions that you had felt you had to make. How did you bring people, like, what's your approach? How do you bring people together? How do you move forward past a negative situation?
So, um. Because they were both personnel issues. I, I was never going to be able to disclose. The details. Right? And still can't disclose. The details. Um, but, uh. It was very telling in both of those, the board was. Unanimous. We didn't do anything without consulting legal counsel, hey, right? This is, this is where we're at and. Um, a- again, in the other situation, we also had three attorneys weigh in. Uh, and, and they were unanimous and oftentimes getting attorneys to agree, but they, but they were unanimous, um, in both of those. Um, and then. Uh, yeah, there's, there's probably a few. People who still haven't healed, but I will say that. Out of a staff of about a hundred. That, you know, there might be, you know, three people whose noses. You know, still out of joint to very much, you know, can't understand why. Someone was like, oh, but the majority of the staff. Came around and saw that. Everyone was going to be treated fairly, even the people, even the people who were very much supportive of the folks who were. Just missed or were always treated the same. If you were an outside observer, you would never see a difference. Between the positive regard for anyone regardless of their stance. Cause that's. That's the job of the superintendent, right? Is to not, to not play favorites, to have everybody treated fairly. And to have people be able to have contrary opinions and to be able to respect that. And so how do you heal it? You allow, you know, you allow. People to talk and vent and, um. Uh, the tricky part with, the tricky part with personnel is that. That personnel issues can't be fully disclosed. And, and that, you know, that's, that is tricky, but I think, you know, just being. Right at the door, then, you know, the next morning, reading students, doing, doing my job, still coming to the. The plays and the musicals and all of those things and not changing, not changing my behavior, still giving the students. Um, my all. What I was hired to do. Yeah. And it wasn't, it wasn't always easy. I, I, I do believe that some of the most invested parents. Truly. Recognized. That these things had to happen and were very supportive.
Time for one more. I, I can do one or. All right, I'll do my one. Kind of circling back to where we started on some of the questions about school culture and leadership. You know, I've been very struck by your, your point that, you know, it takes three years to really entrench a, a culture. But it has to start much sooner than that and. I've come to learn that superintendent candidates typically emphasize they don't plan to make a big, you know, make a lot of noise on day one, show up and learn and. So forth, but day one also strikes me as a very important. Moment in a culture setting. Process. And so I'd be curious either in the past, how you've approached it or how you think about. What you see as the sort of day one element of, of starting that process of culture change?
Yeah, it's, you know, that's a, that's a wonderful question. So. In, in the beginning, it's just, it's just words, but you know, actions speak a lot of the words, but in the beginning, there aren't those actions to support it. So people are like, yeah, he talks a good game, you know, and it takes, it takes a while for people to see. Yeah, all right. Right? He. He means what he says and says what he means. He's going to do that. Um, I think that, uh. Opening day addresses by the superintendent talk about, it's, it's not a time for big, heavy discussions. It's a time for. A vision and a time for, okay, we're. We're coaching. Right? We're barking on this. New year and. Here are all the, you know, here are all the wonderful things that we are, that we are building upon and having people have a good year and having people know what. What to expect. Right? They, I think people. Employees want to know. What is it going to be like with this person? Are they going to be enacting change immediately? And to make it clear, no, right? The first, right, the first. Six months are, uh, are listening to this. It's understanding the community. There are things in the community that are sacred and I don't want to come in and step on them or change them, right? And there are other things that need to be changed and I don't want to ignore them. But I need to have that. I need to have that knowledge and that comes from all of the stakeholders, all of the constituents. And then my job is not to have it be, okay, here, here's Bill Collins is. Right? Here's what I'm bringing in the way we're going to go. It's to, it is to take. That amalgamation of what everybody says, uh, as stakeholders. And to find the commonalities, create a vision and be the person who articulates. That vision for the district. And then, then we work on, okay, now we're all bought in. This is our collective vision. This is the thing that we all say. We're about. If we're from Lennox, this is what we're about. You can ask a student, you can ask a parent, you can ask a teacher. And in their own words, they're going to be able to tell you, this is what we're about. And, uh. And the superintendent's job is to, is to, to take that and turn that into something that is. Achievable. And then as we have this collective place that we are going, that we know we're headed to our goals. We can say, then we can make decisions to talk about the budget, right? A decision, you know, let's do X, Y, and Z. Does that bring us closer to our goal? Uh, farther away. And it, and if it's something that's really important, it's bringing us farther away, maybe we have to revisit our goals. But we have set this, this is where we're about and this is where we're headed. And if this thing is extraneous. Sorry, right? We're going to spend our money and put our efforts. Into, uh, where we see ourselves going. And I think that, you know, on the first day, it's, it would be impossible to articulate. That vision, but it wouldn't be impossible to speak about. Getting to that point.
All right. I think toss it back to you for, uh. Anything you wish we'd asked and didn't or?
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, so, um. Uh, and I, and I ask this in one way or form with the different, um. Groups that I met with, but if. If. If I end up as your candidate and a year from now. You say, wow. That was a really good choice. We picked the best person for the job. That's outstanding. Look what he's accomplished. What would I accomplish? What would be your expectation in a year from your perspective? What would, what would I have, what would I have done? What would, how would the district look differently? Under my leadership, one year from now than it looks today?
I can say, I think it would be, they would be. Expressing a clear and unconditional vision. That all people in the community are treated with dignity, respect, value. Love, if that's not to ask too much, but that love and sense of belonging, um, whether it's a student, employee. A visitor, a vendor, that we are a, a, a community that. Sees and cares about all people and we respect their identities and their. Ways of being and that we don't tolerate people who disrespect them.
The, in this, in the student group, we had that very, we had that very conversation. It's, they, they are, you've got, you've got some great kids. We had that, we had that in, in different words, but we had that very.
And we did in this process and, uh, Megan and I were, you know, listened to the kids and. They were, I mean, they, they've, they've been through some tough stuff and, but yet they really. That's what they want. They want to be seen and loved and cared for and they want those who detract from that to be held accountable. And that seemed really, that was very clear. Uh, that's what they. So that's why I said that and also what I believe, whatever.
Yeah, I think that, um. If faculty and students and the community feel that you're accessible. I mean, that wouldn't, that's not, obviously you might be accessible, nothing great is happening, but. You know, that, 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 uh, faculty feel that you are approachable, uh, that you can talk about their passion or, or. You know. Team, uh, principals are asking teachers to write, uh, improvement plans, um. Professional growth goals and, and student growth goals. Um, and that you're. That you're familiar with that kind of stuff going on and. And that the community feels, you sees you at events. And, and feels that you're, you know, a part of the community.
I would like to see, um, more engagement with the community, local business owners, local, local companies. Again, I don't. Talking to Uncle in the face about non-college, um, pathways, but I think that would be a really important.
I can, I can, um. There were, um, certain things that you had mentioned, uh, in, in the, in the course of, of, of this past hour plus. And, you know, and, and they can, they, they, they included a, uh. A, a, a vision of an environment where. There are, uh, opportunities for, uh, for, for people to feel part of it. And, and I, I think that can extend outside of the actual school itself and, and into the community. Uh, and I think that, um. The, you know, I, I heard the word top down. Uh, as, uh, a, a lot as a. As this, as something that is. Not really perhaps in your leadership style. And, and, and I felt it, um. Yeah, from my vision, if a lot of the things I heard you say came to fruition, that in and of itself would be a.
I, I think very briefly, it's, it's, it's really, you know, to your comment about actions speak louder than words, it's really. Inhabiting the commitment and investment. In the schools rather than just speaking to them or having lofty ideas. And, and that's something that you almost can feel. I think more so than everything. And so if we saw that in a year from now, I think. That would constitute success to me.
Somewhat along with that, you know, a lot of transition, I think in here from now, if faculty, staff and parents felt excited and. That the change. Is a positive, it's a moment of positive change. And then two years from now. Will be some solid change.
I just want to add one thing. I think, uh, we'd love to see a leader who. Really embraces the beauty and wonder of this community. We've learned much about Lennox and celebration of music and art and just. Picnics on the lawn and apple sprays. I think people, they want to see their leader enjoying what we all love about the community. So the hope would be. That you would, it was you, that you would find, you know. What we all find so wonderful about this community and that, that we, as important to you as it is to us.
This, this is a final statement. I would say, um, I'm. I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a status quo guy. I don't, I, I don't jump in blind. Um, and that hence the needs assessment and, and the time that it takes to do that well, but. Um, there'd be, there'd be pushback, there'd be pushback to you, respect administration, respect to teachers, but respect. Um, because that's what you hire the superintendent to do. Yeah, I, it's, it's a big. It's, it's a big decision that you have in front of you and whoever you pick, I absolutely wish you the. Best of luck. You've got a lovely community here and I've appreciated my day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So where's the, what?
It's in Marathon halfway between Key Largo and Key West. Thirty-six foot.
About a fifteen minute break.
This is the Lennox School committee. Uh. They choose to sit and introduce, they will introduce themselves or you may walk around. To meet you.
We had lunch together.
Opportunity to stretch for a moment.
All right.
Right.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We, I guess we'll introduce ourselves again in more depth. We need a new challenge this time.
Oh, I had a better sun fact.
No, sorry. It's now introduce yourself and recommend a book or a movie. Well, you'll, it can be a classic. It can just be like Citizen Kane was good and everyone not know. We'll start on this side, fairness.
I'm Warren Cass, member of the school committee, that's me, the kids in elementary school in here. Uh, and I recommend an Amazon Prime movie called Vengeance with the offices DJ Novak, which was much funnier than I expected.
Hi, I'm Veronica Benton, um, basically hitched to the district to have graduated from Lennox. Um, and I've been doing, reading a lot of books on history and racial social justice, and one that was really enjoyable and read like a novel, but was non-pitched, was The Warmth of Other Suns um, by, uh, Wilkerson. And then she wrote Cass, which I think she got a culture for. And I think what was pivotal and wonderful about that was really digging into stories of people who moved in a great migration. And I recommend it to everyone.
I'm Dave Remmeler. Uh, I am the parent of an eleven or fourteen-year-old. Um, I gotta say, Old Yeller has a place in my heart. You know, the, the, you know, the movies are church or for the end, but I, I, I really, the book is good. Really.
For quality of writing, because I read a hundred fifty books a year. And I, but mostly it's mysteries and stuff, not necessarily high quality. Beach music. Very high quality.
Beach music. I'm endorsed, all right.
I'm Christine Morrow. I'm, I'm gonna go with two books that I'm currently reading, because I like to read multiple books. One, one is a book that I read the third time. So once every decade, I reread it, and I am again convinced that of, of why I absolutely love to have to read it again, which is Critic on Macan by Neil Stevenson. Uh, Neil Stevenson is a voluminous writer and publishes very long books prolifically, but it's not my conscience. I bought it first in two thousand and one, really soon after mine. The other is one that was actually recommended, recommended by my little sister on doing an audio book, which is The Hearts and Physical Furies by John Iris Mabel, and I'm only twenty-three percent of that.
I can currently see you again, um. Okay, let's see, um. I love Everything's Beating King. I've read The Stand like three, four times, and I just finished Mr. Mercedes. I actually, I'm not sure if I can recommend it, but it's my most recently read, so.
I can't think of the name of the book there, which is driving me crazy, so I'm gonna be distracted for the entire interview. But the good one is a TV, it's like, I'm looking around the zone, some moral philosophy kind of, it's pretty cool.
Good one.
I'm Deanna LaBlanc, and, um, I, I tend to also read multiple books at a time. Uh, one of my more recent reads that I really enjoyed was Cultivating Genius by Goldie Muhammad. And I do end up spending a lot of time on educational literature, but I also, I'm having kids of my own. I'm, I'm rereading House on Mango Street, a story about identity, and that's kind of appropriate, and I have a question.
Well, I think that brings to a close our
Wonderful.
That was easy. So we have about an hour and fifteen minutes altogether, um, similar to last time around, when I start with opening statement. You know, you just ask them, tell us about yourself, background, your position, your disposition. Also, how you're thinking about residency, residency visa for Lennox and, um, how you envision integrating yourself with the communities. We have a bunch of questions we'll throw at you, we'll have a free-for-all toward the end.
Okay.
And then closing for whatever we forgot to ask that you
Thank you. Um, so I'm Deanna LaBlanc. I use safer pronouns. I am coming to you from Gateway Regional currently, um, where I am the Director of Curriculum. This is my, I'm in my fourth year as the Director of Curriculum at Gateway. Uh, I've been there for six years, my first two years was the Assistant Principal in the middle of high school. Um, prior to that, I was a principal for a year at Pearl Roads Elementary, which has since closed. Um, and I was an Assistant Principal in Southern Berkshire at the elementary level, mostly at Undermount, but also at Marvus. Uh, so that's kind of my administrative background prior to that, and it was very sweet, because the students wanted to know all about that. Um, I, my, my first part of my career was a music educator. I was a choir band director, and I go on public schools, and even prior to that, I was a music teacher at McCallum Public Schools. So that's kind of my, where have I been so far? I have absolutely loved the adventure of being a curriculum director. And I didn't know how much I was going to enjoy being in central office and getting to kind of shift from looking at student learning. And I, I love talking about student learning, but my, my role has shifted now, um, to adult learning a lot more. And that has been fascinating for me. I really enjoyed that process. Uh, and part of what's really exciting about Lennox is knowing that there are curriculum needs to be built. Um, and at the same time, knowing that the achievement, you know, data in the district is in really great shape. And there are targeted areas where we can make some significant improvements, which is exciting work. And I feel like I can bring that expertise and being able to really look at and hone in on targeted areas within our achievement data that we can do significant work is something well within my wheelhouse. I'm excited for the opportunity to take on kind of lead in that. Um, and that's, that's kind of what's really exciting to me. And the other piece for me is the small district and the opportunity to be in the schools, the opportunity to get to know students. One thing I pride myself on where I am now, given that it is a small district, is I do know a lot of the students. And that's really important to me, and I really appreciate that feel and be actively involved in community. So that's a little bit about why I'm excited to be here. And how do I plan to integrate with myself? Um, I spend a lot of time, so currently, just for reference, I commute forty-five minutes, uh, each way to Huntington, Massachusetts from my home. Uh, and I am there a lot. Uh, ways that I currently integrate my, in myself into there are things like, uh, coaching robotics team for the first time this year. It's going okay, we'll see how it ends up. Um, but also being involved in different student activities, whether it's being at a band concert, whether it is, uh, being involved or going to visit uh, student activities, after-school athletics, uh, things like that. But actually being actively there, um, students seeing you there, uh, that's really important. Families need to feel connected to the leadership. So that's a really critical piece. So I would plan to bring that same philosophy and way of being here, and the commute difference is seven minutes each direction. So I'm confident I can handle that. Um, I've been commuting for a long time, so I am, I know that I can do that. Uh, I know the residency question has come up, and I just want to clarify for the committee that I do have my own kids in high school. Um, so I would not be looking to move right away, because I don't want to displace them while they're in high school. Did I get all the parts in that?
Covered it all.
All right.
We're often running.
Christine.
Yes, so questions, you have any other questions? And I will also be reading them aloud. Uh, so first question, as you've had the opportunity to learn more about our district, what stands out to you as our unique assets and challenges? And how do you see your particular skill set working effectively for us? And why do your skills match?
So I'm going to quote your students, because I thought they had the strongest answer to this. Yeah, um, what they, when I asked them what they're proud of about their district, they said, we're proud of our, our teachers. Um, we come to school because we're really excited to, to see our teachers. Um, we know that they know what they're talking about. They teach us a lot, and we're excited to be here with them. Uh, so when we talk about assets, you've got dedicated staff. We know that your achievement data shows that people are achieving here. That happens when staff are dedicated to what they're doing. Uh, so I think it's really important to acknowledge that and recognize, especially given all of the turmoil in leadership for a while, that that is a significant asset that you've held on to. And that's no small feat right now, because it is really tricky to, to get new staff, get them on-boarded, and hold on to routine staff. Uh, so I think that speaks a lot to the community, uh, at hand, and I think that's really critical. As far as challenges, there's definitely a sense that, uh, there's work to do around, uh, policies and procedures, whether it be related to harassment, bullying, whether it be related to how we handle lots of different things. And I think that the needle is moving in that direction. I think people are acknowledging it, and I think it's out there. That's really good, but it's still an area that we can focus on. I also recognize that curriculum is an area that's been identified through the ASK that we need to continue to work on. Uh, and that's really exciting work to get to engage in, so I think that's a really nice piece. Uh, so my skill set, how does that match those things? Uh, so I am a Director of Curriculum currently. I really love getting involved in curricular work. Um, it changes a bit in this role, because right now, that is most of what I, well, that's a good part of what I do. But in, in the superintendent role, it's going to take a little bit different. It's going to be more shoulder-to-shoulder work with building administrators, because that's the structure that's currently in place. So it's going to be sitting down, working side by side with them, seeing where they're feeling things around, taking the time to go to classrooms, really working hand in hand with them to take, we'll get a, what where are we going to go next? Um, and then really putting together committees using, I can use my expertise to help guide a process that's clear in order to do that, but it's also important that, um, and, and I do this in my work currently, and I would bring that here, is to empower teacher voice in that process. Um, because at the end of the day, the teachers are the, uh, boots on the ground, they're the ones at front of our students. So they need to be part of curricular decision-making articulation, uh, that kind of work. So I would be bringing that forward. Um, other skill sets that match the needs. I'm a big process person. Um, I think it's really important. I, I am a rule follower, and I like rules. Um, they help me to do work. And I think when we look at whether it be bullying and harassment policies, whether it be how we go through investigations, like for instance, Title IX investigation, it's critical that everyone knows how to do that. Uh, so it's important that I would bring forward, making sure we have professional development for our leadership team so that we're prepared to do that work. Um, it would be critical for me to be working side by side with them to make sure that those policies are moving, that people know how it operates, to make sure that everyone's got a good sense of that. Uh, so being a process person, I think I can really bring that strength.
Um, what does good management mean to you? What is your management style? And how will it help you be an effective leader, especially against good others?
Sure. Oh, good management is a loaded term. Here we go. Um, I think good management starts from empowering and supporting folks to do what they do best. So for example, there are plenty of places that I can help and support instruction, but I'm not necessarily a content expert in every piece. I have a good amount of experience in leadership, um, but that doesn't mean I'm an expert in absolutely everything. So I think good management is knowing when to help and support, when to coach up, and when to be supervisory, and really kind of parsing that out. I think we can get in, or I think leaders can get into trouble when they micromanage situations. But there's a, a large difference between micromanagement and, and being, um, distant. Um, so it's important to me to be involved in buildings. It's important for me to work shoulder to shoulder with leadership, uh, building-level leadership. It's important for me to be visible in the schools, and I want all of those things to happen. But not every single, um, small bit do I need to be necessarily controlling. And I need people to feel empowered to do their jobs well. Um, and because that is what's going to grow that sense of, you know, empowerment and wanting to continue on working here and retaining the good folks that we have. Um, so that's, I think, really important. My management style, I, I view central office as kind of a customer service type model where our job is really to support building leaders to be able to remove any barriers so that they can lead. And so that, and then building leaders are removing any barriers needed so that teachers can teach. So our job is to be the support network for them. Our job is to provide and allocate resources so that they can do the work that they need to do. Um, and that happens so that teachers can do that really critical work of being there with our students and teaching them. Um, so I really believe in that, and it's important to be taking away barriers and allocating resources uh, in order for all of that work to happen. And sometimes we can get stuck where that's not necessarily what's happening. So it's important to kind of revisit that. Uh, and I think having really good communication in your leadership team lets you know, are we actually doing that? Is that happening? So that's kind of a little bit about my management style. Thank you.
Can you give us an example of an organizational change made in the past? Um, for instance, in the composition of your team or in the roles and responsibilities? And why did you make that change? How did you plan it, and what was the
Sure. Um, so one big piece of, of organizational change that I, that I made in the process of working with our, um, at Gateway Middle School was really pushing forward the idea of, um, kind of restructuring some staffing so that we could include intervention positions. Uh, because while that typically happens at the elementary level, it's, it's becoming clear with the gaps and learning that we need to address those at upper grade levels too. So I was able to work very closely with our, um, Assistant Superintendent of Finance Operations and with the current superintendent to really look at where we could utilize funding differently and structure to where we have interventionists at the secondary level as well, because the needs were clear. Um, we had the data to show, okay, these are clear needs for students. Uh, and then look at what would that look like? Um, you know, we, we definitely couldn't onboard three or four different people. So what skill set were we looking for? And we identified that we had a good amount of, um, ability to support in mathematics. But we were going to need some help with reading, with literacy intervention, even at upper grades. So, you know, it was a good opportunity to kind of restructure, look at our staffing and say, how can we allocate, um, financial resources in order to do that work? Uh, and that was happening during the time that we were transitioning between superintendents. There was a lot more involvement from, uh, other members of the leadership team to get that work going.
Can you talk a little bit more about what actually managing or implementing the change then looked like after everyone's agreed that it should happen?
Yes.
Then making it happen, obstacles along the way?
Oh, there are definitely bumps along the road. So it was really, it was lovely, because we found this wonderful person that could step in and do that work. Uh, but then it was structuring the systems to make sure we actually had kids available, and their schedules were structured in a way. So there were a lot of decisions. So the next piece is, how do we make it so that kids can actually get that in their schedule without supplanting other instruction that they need to have? So we spent a good amount of time figuring out in this, in our scheduling, how we could offer, um, an intervention block or what I need, period, in order to allow, um, students to actually receive that intervention time. So there was the structural scheduling piece that we had to work out. There was, uh, working through and finding the resources, because we hadn't had that position, so we also didn't have intervention resources. So going through a selection process for resources was another key piece. Uh, so there was kind of a lot of different steps to get it up and moving. And I think what was most impressive was people were excited to, to see that change. So they were engaging in that, and we were able to get it moving quickly.
And have you had time to see whether it's worked?
Yes, yes. Um, yes, we're in year two now, and that's, it's an exciting thing, because we can see the students are making gains. We do have our, uh, assessment piece, so we can actually track the data, see where student gains are. And I think that's huge, especially for students, because you're giving that, you're changing kind of things around for them. So for them to be able to see that data and see that improvement is key for them to buy into that. And especially when you're working with secondary-level students, they need to have some buy-in in that and feel like they're
Was it primarily middle school?
It was primarily middle school. Yeah.
What was the budget barrier that you
There is a budget barrier. Um, so to, so right now, as we all know, looking at kind of the financial scape, scope, um, given that Esser has kind of an end date, choosing to just fund a position out of Esser means that when that goes away, so does the position. So it was figuring out how we could relook at the, uh, local operating budget to try to get that position in there. And we are typically a gateway, um, pretty tight on the budget, so we have to be pretty careful. So that was the obstacle that we really had to combat. How can we shift around funds and what would we potentially shift into Esser to allow that to be out of local operating? And we're still Oh, that's, that's still a process. We're not a hundred percent there yet.
So it was initially funded with Esser?
Yes.
And now you've got to make it stay, but you've got the data that says it's working, and now you're right, make the money be there.
Yeah, so now it's partially out of it over the course of a couple of years.
Next, um, other management-related question. How do you create a culture of accountability, um, for the people you're working with? Um, and, and your own team, and also thinking about a superintendent role? How do you make sure your team is, is bringing that accountability to, to their teams as well?
Sure.
Before you answer that, maybe explain to me what your structure looks like for directors.
Yes, absolutely. So, um, as the Director of Curriculum at Gateway, I actually do not necessarily have So, um, as the director of curriculum at Gateway, I actually do not necessarily have a team underneath me. Um, so that's one of the tricky parts about that position. So most of my work has to be done through motivation. Um, team building and and getting people on board to do that work. Uh, we do, we did actually start to work, uh, work on building team leaders, the teacher leaders. Uh, which are slowly coming into some curricular responsibilities over the course of the next year or so. Um, but as of now, a lot of the curriculum work has had to be with uh, stipended committees, pieces like that. So we've had to be fairly creative with that. In order to move the work forward. So, interesting challenge. Um, the district that I'm in now has a superintendent and assistant superintendent of finance operations, director of curriculum, director of people services and. And a couple of other positions that are. Alright. Culture of accountability.
Yeah.
Alright. So one key piece is making sure that everyone knows what's expected, setting those expectations upfront is critical. Um, that's always tricky year one because you're coming right in and you don't have all the information about the place. So it's important to set some very clear. Uh, upfront expectations about what you want to see in year one. And those have to be. Not necessarily tied to a the strategy plan that someone else has developed or not necessarily. So we have to be looking at more. Uh, policy based work, things like that, um, or looking at the administrative of the evaluator rubric from Massachusetts and kind of. Taking a look there and saying, okay, where where are we on teaching all students? What is, you know, where are we on some of those pieces? Uh, finance, uh, operations is another great. Indicator that's that's a good one to start out looking at. Um, and then from there, we start to go further and as we work together. They'll set some clearer expectations based on a strategy plan that we've put together after getting lots of information. Um, and working with community stakeholders. So I think it's going to be really important. To set that culture of accountability by setting some basic expectations around what we're doing with operations and finance by looking at how. How we're going about evaluating staff because that's a pretty common understanding. That's set up by the state. By looking at um. Some of our policies and procedures and starting from that point and then starting to look at a strategy plan based on gathering. Information from stakeholders and spending the time in Lennox and really getting to know everyone. So we'd start out with a really kind of concrete stuff for setting expectations and then move into strategy moving forward. But after we set expectations. Then it's checking in regularly, finding out where people are at, setting up regular communication and meetings and so that we have sense about where people are at. In meeting their goals, in meeting, you know, the expectations that are set forth by us. Uh, and with any good accountability comes support when people are struggling. So it should never be a surprise to anyone. When you have a concern about what's going on. Um, it's really important to be transparent when you have concerns about. And so I think accountability also kind of goes both ways in that there is a necessary transparency in that work. So, how do you hold your own team accountable? We set some expectations as to how we evaluate. Our staff. We set some expectations for what we hope to see over the course of the year and what our goals are. We meet on it regularly. We talk about it regularly. Um, support and coaching is available if as needed. If we're meeting where we need to be, wonderful. If we're not, then we have to go forward through the supervision and evaluation process and say, okay. We're not meeting the metric that we need to, so let's set forward an additional plan.
Meeting on regularly, what is, what is your feeling about changes in listening?
So. Uh, one of the things I really appreciate about the team that I'm on now is is that we we visit that about monthly. Uh, and that's really helpful because it gets, it gets a really strong sense about that. Um, in my current structure, we actually set sixty day goals for. Um, for work to kind of uh, chunk it down a little bit more so that we have a clear sense about it, but it also. The really nice um, effect of that is when you meet something in sixty days, there's something to celebrate about, be excited about getting that. It's really kind of nice. Um, so that's the structure that I that's currently used at Gateway and that is somewhat helpful, but I do think that it's important to be revisiting that. Monthly. Um, just to have sense about where things are at.
So, um, this goes a little bit more to professional culture and so how do you engage with professionals outside of your school community? To broaden your network scholarship and discuss ways in which these networks have guided your leadership and education.
Absolutely. So I've spent a a good chunk of time over the past several years, um, having been working at Gateway, working with the statewide systems of support. Um, and that team is, you know, out of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we have the privilege of them visiting pretty regularly. They work side by side with us, which is really exciting. Um, and they often. Help to connect additionally. On top of that, I am involved in the Curriculum Leaders PLC out of the uh, collaborative in Northampton. Uh, and that has been a huge help as far as the group goes. Um, I do attend or I did attend this past year, the M I S S conference. Out on the Cape with my superintendent. Um, I do attend superintendent roundtables when I'm able to as a guest with my current superintendent. Um, and those networking opportunities are critical. Uh, especially moving into a leadership position like this because I would love to tell you that I will have the answer to everything, but I am positive I will need to lean on others. To get answers and to kind of continue to grow my work. So I think networking is really critical. Um, I have participated. Um, I'm also part of the case group, which is Title One Directors. Uh, and that's been actually a really helpful group as well, um, both from understanding federal grants, but also really, um. The depth of knowledge and literacy education amongst that group is phenomenal. Um, and it it's a great place to keep growing your professional knowledge. So I really enjoy.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, how do you cultivate the next generation of teacher leaders? Explain what you've done to improve performance and make superior status. Average performance.
Okay, so number one is empowering teacher voice. Um, it's really important to have opportunities for teachers to lead. Structured opportunities where they can step into that. Um, and really feel good about the work that they're doing. Uh, so examples of that are things like if you're doing uh, high quality instructional material selection. Engaging them in the process, making sure that they have a voice in that. If you're doing um, diversity, equity and inclusion work, making sure that you have an equity task force that engages. Uh, teachers in that, that teacher voice is critical in that. Uh, making sure that you have different groups that are working towards important tasks. Where teacher voice is critical and where they have the opportunity to have equity of voice, where it's not. That they're there and I'm talking to them, but instead it's a conversation amongst everyone. Where we're all digging into the work together and where we're assuming good intentions and we're working shoulder to shoulder. So I think it's critical. To provide those opportunities within the structure of the district. Where teachers can feel really good about that work, where they can engage in work that they are highly interested in and that fits within what they want to do. A lot of times you'll see teachers engage in lots of different things. Um, that's usually a sign that you have someone that really wants to go into leadership long term. And so it's really important to empower that, whether it be through data work. And letting them sit down with you and really dig into achievement data, whether it's um, engaging them in looking at. Intervention data at the building level, whether it's. Taking the time to uh, offer opportunities for professional development. Sometimes the best professional development comes from our teachers. Uh, some of them have wonderful skills that they are able to share. So that's a great opportunity to engage teachers. Having them go and share some of the things that they're doing. Uh, when we see outstanding strategies, we should be highlighting them and and letting teachers show off what they do. That's, these are the things that make them. Excited to come to work and excited to keep growing in their practice and grow those leaders. So.
How about the second?
Sorry. So.
Taking an ad for performer and building here.
Absolutely. So when you have someone that is maybe not performing as well as you know that they they can. Um, it's really important to find out the why and find that opportunity to engage them. Whether it be a PLC or an opportunity like that, whether it be a mentoring opportunity, whether it be. Uh, going to collaborate with someone in another district. Uh, very often, especially in smaller districts, some of the challenges happen to be that. People are the only person teaching that subject. Um, and that could cause some, some, um. I don't want to say being, things being stale, but it can cause kind of being siloed and. It's really important for professional growth for people to collaborate. Um, that's a really critical piece. So looking at is this person, you know, maybe not performing as well as they could because they don't have the opportunity to collaborate. Is it because? There's a, there's a lack of resources for that. So that's part of the work is finding out the why in it and then providing that support. Um, and it's always better to go the support route, especially when you're confident that they have that ability. We want to support that up first and then if needed, we go to the accountability piece, but typically we can support that out by finding the why. Providing the resources, allowing for collaboration. Those are the pieces that can make significant change. Thank you.
Alright, so our next um, question is about curriculum, which I I think will be right in your real house. Um, as a curriculum director, so could you please tell us about your experience working with curriculum, for instance, assessing for children in place, identifying any to revise? Or implementing new curriculum? What did you learn from these experiences and how would you use what you have learned uh, here at Lennox?
Absolutely. So, um, I've done quite a bit of curriculum work over the past few years. Um, we started out being at our math curriculum. Um, so we were, when I. Started working in the curriculum part of curriculum working gateway. Um, we had kind of disjointed several different programs being used. Um. Not a lot of people super excited about the work that was going on. Um, there was a lot more consistency at the elementary level where a lot of people were using Go Math. Um, there was a little less consistency as we got up through middle school. Um, and there was some frustration there. So we started out the work by convening a math instructional leadership team. A group that met um, regularly after school to really look at what does instruction in mathematics look like. Um, with with the goal of determining, are we happy with what we're using right now? Uh, and so we took the time to really review some, we had three different programs happening um, in the middle school. So there was a good amount of disjointedness. So we started off by looking at the three different things that were being used. Uh, and people had a lot to say about that and it was important to hear everyone's voice and give them the opportunity to talk about it. And then set some goals. And they, the teacher, the instructional leadership team came together to say, we would like more consistency. We would like to see a plan that looks more consistent across buildings. So that was exciting and that's what you want to hear. But they came to that after looking at what was in use. And see and looking at student data and saying, wow, I have some concerns about this. Um, so again, that teacher empowerment was critical. Um, so once we did that work, it was time to go, okay, so we've identified we want to change. Now what are we going to do? Um, and so we started to review curriculum. So we used a process where uh, we first, we started with an instructional vision. So we did a visioning protocol to to decide what we believed math instruction should look like in math classrooms K through eight. Uh, that was a really uplifting process, seeing teachers excited about talking about instruction and saying. We want our students to be excited to engage in problems. We want math problems that have entry points for every child. These were really exciting things and they they came up with a vision that was really, um, it spoke to what they wanted to see. Classes and they were excited about it. So after going through the process of visioning. We set some non-negotiables. So for example, we're in a district where there are areas that don't have, uh. High speed internet access all over the place. So, um, we couldn't do a program, for example, that required online access. So that was a non-negotiable. Um, and there were several others, like for instance, if they do use online materials at all, they would have to work with promos because that's what students have. And so there were some basic non-negotiables and then we went and looked at three different um, high quality instructional materials that met the gateways. Uh, through curate and end reports, which are teach, which are peer review. Um, models of looking at high quality instructional materials. So we took a look and said, okay, I identified three really high, you know, high scoring materials and then. Teachers took that apart and we used a plus delta chart with our vision statement to really look at, okay, where do we see all the good stuff based on our vision and where do we see that? Oh, I wonder, does this really meet our vision? Um, and it came out pretty clearly, um, in favor of one program. And we ended up deciding to go forward with that and implementing. So implementation is always a little bumpy. Um, anytime that we're asking for significant change at folks, that's a hard thing to do. Uh, and it's a lot of work. So it starts from a place of respect and understanding that when we're asking for big change, it takes time and it's hard work. Uh, so making sure there's the space for that and the opportunity to hear teachers. So teachers came forward and expressed things like in the elementary grades of this programming, um, the center's work required a lot of preparation at first. So. How do we set aside some time for collaboration to make sure that happens so that that's not causing teachers to. You know, be doing three hours of work every evening in order to do that. Uh, and so we did set aside some collaboration time and we did use a couple of our half day release P D days. To make sure teachers have the opportunity to dig into that work. Which then, you know, made them feel better about that. We did find opportunities to do cross grade level collaboration. So that we had a clear sense about how things were going. Um, and so while there were bumps because people were feeling like, I'm not going to get through everything the first try or, um. You know, I I'm not feeling like the kids are getting it. You know, we brought in a coach. Um, we used a consultant as a coach. Um, that was a good use of S R funds where they, um, where it's a one-time expenditure. But to do all that work with classroom teachers really build up their capacity. And they were feeling good and empowered. And I'm happy to say that now in year two, things are going pretty well. So that's a kind of clear scope for what that looks like. K through eight. So, um. It was. So we did end up in that direction. I wasn't a hundred percent sure that would be the case, but it did end up that way. So what did I learn from that? That it takes a lot of patience, um, and it takes time and it takes respecting professional judgment of the people that are. Doing the work. It takes finding the supports as they're needed. We can't always. Predict every single support someone's going to need. So sometimes we have to be creative with how we provide support. Um, within the confines of whether it be the contract, whether it be, um. What people need at that moment, whether it be time, whatever it might be. Uh, but we can get creative. We can find a way to support people and make them feel like, you know, we're there, we hear them and we can support them in the work. So patience is critical, finding supports is critical, um. But also trying to find the joy in the work. It's exciting when students are feeling success with something. So making sure we highlight the joy of that. Is really important. And so being able to celebrate success at the end and actually hear people saying, by golly, the kids really get it. That was like one of, one of the highlights of my um, end of year last year was having teachers say, I wasn't sure, but. The kids really got it and I'm excited. And that, that's that joy that you hope that we'll find as we engage in this project.
So, um, just a a little quick question about the implementation and the coach. Was the uh, bumpy rollout of this expected?
Yes. Yeah, we expected it to be challenging, um, especially thinking about we were implementing the this in the first year where everybody was coming back full time. So we kind of knew it was going to be difficult. We knew the teachers were facing a lot of challenges as is. But they were amazing and they were really enthusiastic about the work. And I truly believe that it was that enthusiasm. And they're feeling like they had a voice in this process that made it work. Uh, but I. We could not have done it without their dedication.
And at what point did you realize you needed? You know, this is bigger than in-house implementation and and we needed to bring in.
So about two months in, about two months in, we were like, okay, people are feeling really frustrated. And you know that point where you can see that people are getting ready to say, maybe I don't want to do this. That's that point where you go, wait a second, we got to pause. What supports do we need to put in place now in order to assure success? So we we did. And all of that was happening as we were switching superintendents as well. So there was lots of change going on. But again. They worked incredibly hard. They were incredibly passionate about what they're doing and. I can't say enough good things about them.
So I think, um, so next, I think, um. I think from what I can see, although you can speak to it, um, a lot of your experience is more of it at the elementary and the middle school. So could you give us, we just got a great example. Curriculum and and math supports, um, that was really detailed. So could you give us some examples of? Um, focus on high school.
Sure.
Have a different situation there and some of the ways you would.
Absolutely. One of the key things that right now we're looking at at the high school level is making sure that every student um, is reflected in what is being read. So every student should see themselves in what they read. Uh, so making sure that we have um, a diverse author, a diverse set of authors we're reading from. Making sure that there are um, differences of opinion being presented, um, and just making sure that there's kind of a diversification of thought in that. Uh, is really important. So posing those questions and asking teachers to engage, it's very different than saying, okay, we're going to review three programs. Because when you're thinking about E L A and high school, they're doing novel study, they're doing, you know, we're pulling different high quality texts. Um, and in doing that kind of work. So it's important to ask really critical. And in doing that kind of work. So it's important to ask really critical guiding questions. Like, is every student represented in what they read? And put it forward in that way and allow teachers to kind of look at it, analyze and say, you know, I think we're doing a pretty good job here, here, and here. And here's where I think we could, we could do better. This is where I think we could make improvement. And by taking that approach and putting it out as questions and asking, you know, kind of critical pieces, we can get there. When you're looking at, for instance, science, again, that typically that has a little bit more textbook-based. But again, you can go through a selection process, look at some high-quality materials and do that work. The trickier part with that being when you're talking about high school texts, it's in a small district, it may be one, it's usually one, maybe two people teaching any given class. So it's important to then make sure that your team includes things like, if you have an interventionist, things like, if you, people that might be supporting students in those courses, whether it be a special education teacher or a professional. It's important to engage as many stakeholders as possible to look at materials and make sure it makes sense for students. So we want to make sure that we're doing that work.
Okay, thank you.
Again, next, budgeting. So what is your experience preparing budgets and how do you separate priorities in the budget process?
You got it. So my experience includes preparing a building-based budget from when I was in elementary school. But also in my current role, I do a majority of the grants work. So between competitive grants and entitlement grants, I'm responsible for titles one, two, and four in my district. As well as we are currently running close to nine hundred thousand in competitive grants. So I am responsible for the budgeting of that and the allocation of a good amount of that in tandem with our assistant superintendent finance operations. So very often, everything from stipends for different teams that are doing work to positions that are in fact funded through entitlement grants to pieces like, we've gotten several of our curricular resources through grants, things like that. I've done ordering, I've done all of that. So I manage a good amount of money regularly through grants. I will tell you, I never knew I would be a competitive grant writer, but I do actually enjoy that quite a bit. And I think it's a great opportunity to get additional resources to supplement the work in districts. So that is a skill that I would bring forward. I have spent a lot of time really looking at allocation of those resources, especially when you're, when you're working in the entitlement grants. You have to make sure that there is equity in the, in how you allocate resources. Especially, we have two elementary buildings, so making sure there's equity there as well. So there's a good amount of resource allocation involved in that work.
When you did building-based budgets, how big was your budget?
It was small. It was in a small elementary school.
Did you have a technique for building that up for you?
So there's, I mean, when you're dealing with a small school, there's, your staffing costs is a majority of your cost. And then from there, it's looking at your supplies. It's making sure, for example, usually the point of contention is your professional support and how we allocate that and where the student needs are. I think it's really important to have criteria when you're building a budget. So that you can say, you know, these, this is where we can see that it rises to the need of needing a support person. And making sure we have some clear criteria for that, and then making sure we're meeting that based on what students need.
Thinking ahead to what, you know, where Lennox district budget looks like, fourteen, fifteen million. In some senses, it's very different. In some senses, it's just the same process with a lot more moving parts. But thinking about the planning experience you've had, what would be kind of your initial thinking on approaching the budgeting process per district?
So I think approaching a budgeting process with kind of a transparency around communication with it is really important. One piece that I have learned a lot from working with my colleagues at Gateway about is successful budgeting and successful adoption of budgets by town, by the towns when we are transparent in what we're doing. So for example, one, one of the strategies that we use as a team is to make sure that we are doing needs-based budgeting, where we can clearly state why each line has a certain amount to it versus saying, well, we allocate this amount to each department or this amount to. Instead, we say, okay, we're going to be purchasing, we're going to be purchasing, for instance, new biology textbooks, we're going to be purchasing two of the new crash cart kits for physics. We're going to, and being that specific about why each amount is in each line. So that it's really making sure that it's needs-based and clear on where it's going, which is something that we do in grants anyway, because in order to apply for them and do that, we need to do it. So just, it's really taking the skills from that and applying it to the local budget. And I think that that's been really helpful. It's gotten town buy-in to the budget where we did have a lot of contention around budget. And I, watching, watching some of the leaders when I was the assistant principal and then moving into a central office position, now being much more a part of that budget building process and making sure that we are being transparent and that people feel good about, okay, we're requesting this amount, and it's for all of these things. And allowing the opportunity for questions and being able to clearly state why we need things has been really, really critical to the budget being adopted. And while Lennox does successfully pass their budget every year, I do think that there, that you improve communication with the town and improve relationships with the town by being as transparent as possible in the budgeting process and making it clear why we
How many towns? I made sure that we had lunch, but I can hear everybody else. But how many, how many towns are you dealing with with your budget?
Six towns. So yes, it's, there are a lot of moving pieces. And it, you know, it's trying to get everyone bought in and understanding what we're doing. So while your budget process is probably fairly succinct comparatively, we started ours in November for next year. And we, you know, we need to have our budget approved well before town meeting, so we need to really have it approved in March. So we're always kind of in that, having two running at the same time, where you've got your FY twenty-three operating budget, but we're also well into planning the FY twenty-four at this point. And really looking at our staffing allocations and starting to do the shifting of resource allocations based on student needs and based on district needs.
That's pretty much our budget time table.
All right. I think we've arrived at the free-for-all portion of the program.
Yeah, I was going to ask about grant writing.
Yeah.
HQIM, equality, but it's a good answer himself.
Yeah, I also have HQIM.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little perplexed. Is there something called lesser qualities?
I mean, it's, it's, I say it doesn't meet the gate. So, I mean, what, so there are two kind of, there are two peer review options. There's Ed Reports, which is more nationally-based, where they, where teachers review curricular resources, and they give feedback on it, and it gets scored. And the goal of it, and they have nice graphics, it's pretty straightforward to look at, and, and you're really looking for it to be green in all categories or reaching high scores on there. Curie is the Massachusetts version of it, which has been a Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed project for a little while now. And so Curie has fewer resources reviewed, but they have a clear how it aligns to Massachusetts standards and the frameworks. So they will, it does tell you that certain things are not meeting the expectations. So, yeah, they typically call it not meeting expectations or not meeting the gates. But yes, they do have, they, they have said that some of the resources that we have been using across the state don't necessarily meet that anymore. For instance, with science and reading updates and research, there have been several different literacy tools that have been identified as no longer meeting expectations.
Can you talk a little bit about how we would support students with non-college pathways?
Sure. So I think it's really important to, first of all, I think it's wonderful that Lennox has gotten involved with innovation pathways. My understanding is that you're currently in the implementation year with the grant, which is really exciting, and it's a great opportunity for students. And I think what's really neat about innovation pathways is it both supports students who may not be planning to go to college, but also supports our students who are planning to go. So it's a great opportunity either way, and it allows students to leave doors open for themselves should they choose a different path. And I think in education, we spend most, most of our time trying to make sure we don't close doors for kids. That each choice allows them as many opportunities as possible. But aside from innovation pathways, which is a wonderful opportunity, and it gives, gives you the great chance to kind of start working with your local community colleges too, and thinking about dual enrollment and giving students lots of great opportunities. You can also look at career training tracks, and my understanding is that the guidance department has been super active in trying to find internships that are opportunities for students. But we can further do that work to make sure that students have great opportunities with internships. And that starts with really making some connections in the community and starting to build out programming based on what students tell us that they want. Because I can make lots of assumptions about what they might most want to see, but that might not reflect what students want to see. So it's critical for us to get that information and start thinking about, okay, what are some opportunities? Could we set up some internships? Can we set up some different, you know, can we advise students to maybe take one or two dual enrollment courses? And do an internship so that they're, they're ready when they leave school, if they want to go to the workplace? Or that also transfers if they wanted to go to a two- or four-year college. So I think that's really worthy work to dig into.
So I wanted to just kind of divert a little bit, just talk a little bit more about you personally. And you've got three kids, you're really busy in a career, but what, what are some of the things that you'd like to do on a personal level that give you joy and excitement and energy to do your work?
Absolutely. So I did mention that my start in the world of education was music education, so I'm a French horn player. I do get to play still a little bit. I go and play at the University of Rhode Island with the Alumni Wind Ensemble, and that brings me great joy. I am very involved in a lot of the activities that my stu, my children are in. I never knew I would be as enthusiastic about robotics as I am, but hey, here we are. And it's great. And I have learned so much through that process. I, I can't tell you enough how amazing that has been. So I also did not know I would enjoy outdoorsy activities and camping and things like that. But hey, I have two scouts. Those have been really great opportunities for me. By nature, I do love to read and research. That did produce some interesting looks with students. It's like you like to learn about learning. Yes, I do. I really enjoy that. And I, I, you know, one of, one thing that had made me nervous when I moved from building-based to central office was moving away from really spending a lot of time on student learning. But as it turns out, I spend a ton of time on adult learning, and that is equally as fascinating. So I found out in recent years that that is also really kind of a clean area that I really enjoy researching. So that's been kind of something that's really me along.
We have some music out here in summer, but.
Just a little at Tanglewood. You're only a little bit. You know, I love it. My children have been to Tanglewood many times and spent a lot of time on the lawn, as have I. So it's a wonderful place to be.
Can you just backtrack a little bit to that second time you mentioned the adult learning? So can you just tell a little bit more about that? Is that adult learning because you're doing curriculum director? Or adult learning like as a programming in the community?
So right now, it's really more adult learning from the curriculum perspective. I am responsible for the professional development in my district right now. I do run a professional development committee that really, I couldn't do the work without them. They really do help inform that process. That committee makes my heart very happy. Glad that they fell under the joy part of this conversation. But really, thinking about how adults learn, and you know, we know that really good, high-quality professional development is not a one-off. We know that it has to include a coaching component. We know that it requires revisiting, and we know that it requires trying it out in the classroom, and then having an opportunity to talk with other people about it. Learning's collaborative. And so really learning about how adults dig in and learn things has been fascinating. And it's really kind of driven how we are looking at professional development and making sure we're building in collaboration time, making sure we're building in the opportunity for people to receive coaching in what they do. So that's been a really fascinating journey for me. I, I have absolutely loved it. I can't wait to keep going.
So when you were discussing leadership, you, you had mentioned sort of, you had mentioned the word barriers, and you know, it's really important to to make sure that we take barriers away. What are those barriers that you encountered and visioned?
Sometimes it's not having the funding in order to put supports in place for whatever the work might be. Sometimes it's barriers that are more mindset shifts, and those take a little bit more. Those are a lot trickier to work through than, than the allocation of resources. Because you really have to work through that by working with your early adopters to change, making sure that you support them and also really kind of need to cheerlead them and let them know that you see the work that they're doing. And then kind of continue that shifting of mindsets to where, when people see that the work that, that the group of early adopters has started is working, that's when you start to see the shift really happen.
So that kind of segues into a second question I had, you know, you talk about school culture, and, and you, you talked about that it needed improving, I, I believe, in your, in your, in your school system. Was that, was it in your district, was that?
So that was identified a good amount by the staff, yeah.
And so I was kind of curious how that was recognized? How you decided, you know, where you wanted, wanted it to go? And, and what did you do to get it?
How did we move the needle? Okay. So I think number one is always collecting information, taking the time with stakeholders, really hearing what they say. We can send out surveys. Surveys give us hard data, and that's helpful. But there is some really important information that comes from conversations, and I think that's a really critical thing to bring forward. Because if you're leading a district, it's important that people have the opportunity to talk to you about where things are.
What was it about the culture, though, that you changed?
So I think a lot of, there was a really strong sense that there was a disconnect between teachers and administration. And so we spent a lot of time really working hard to make sure that there was a lot of shoulder-to-shoulder work. So that we were engaging in, in important conversations together versus, you know, top-down, we're going to do this, and this is how it's going to go, but rather exercises like learning walkthroughs where everybody, where the whole team, whether it be, well, not whether it be, but including teachers, administrators, central office staff, going into classrooms and then talking about instruction afterwards. And at first, that was a little bit nerve-wracking for folks. But as they got involved and saw that it was really exciting, the conversation was really helpful, and we were able to action plan steps that made sense for everyone. There started to be excitement around it. We're in year three of the practice now, and we get lots of volunteers to do it, and it's always a wonderful time. I absolutely love learning walkthrough days. They're one of my favorite things. But I think the best part about it is when teachers are there saying, this was great. I really enjoyed this. I learned so much. You know, that's the moment that you go, all right, we are moving the needle. People are feeling better about that because they're engaging in these high-level instructional conversations. And they're digging into that, and they're doing that shoulder-to-shoulder with admin, and that really helps bridge that gap. So that has felt really good over time.
Could you tell me more about the learning walkthroughs? Because it does sound fascinating.
It's So, we, so we try to do three per year in each school building to the best of our ability. COVID did make that a unique challenge. And things do happen, but we do our best to do that. And it's a full day where we're taking a team of usually between three and five teachers, the building leader, and at least two central office folks. We do have statewide support team as well. So oftentimes, one or two folks from the state join us as well. And so we've even built to where that shoulder-to-shoulder conversation includes our colleagues from the state. So I think that's pretty exciting that we're all able to do that. But we're going into classrooms, we set a focus. So we're not necessarily looking at everything. We're really trying to focus what we're looking for. For example, for a little while, we used engagement, student engagement as our primary focus. We moved to learning targets as a primary focus, and now we're looking at kind of a combination of learning targets and rigorous grade-level text, you know, rich text and how it's being used at service. So those have been kind of the focus. And so we set our look for us. We take the time, and the first hour of the day is really calibrating. We watch a couple of video lessons, do feedback on that, and really make sure we have a sense about where we're going as a team before we head into classrooms. And then the team breaks up into two or three different groups, goes to different classrooms. Each team visits three or four classrooms, and we come back together, and we have these really rich discussions about instruction. We have data to share back with staff. Staff is eager to hear about it. And it's a great opportunity to really dig into the instructional practices. I absolutely love it.
And then the output from the meeting was?
Usually the goal, usually the goals, we do some action planning, what are our next steps? So is our next step to look that out, the professional development calendar, and perhaps tackle some additional needs in, whether it might be setting how we set learning targets. We might look at it and say, we may look at our data after the learning walkthrough and say, okay, so our next action step needs to be a conversation about, so we're in engagement, one of the strategies is wait time. So how are we using wait time effectively, and what are alternatives to wait time when wait times aren't working? So that might be a staff or a PLC conversation. So kind of setting those action steps based on what we see. So that might be um a stack or a PLC conversation. Uh, so kind of setting those action steps based on what we see.
Good. To go back to where David had started the question about culture problem. Learning walkthroughs seem super cool. They don't seem like an entire solution to a, or even sort of essential to a solution about, you know, like a culture problem and a discipline application administrator. So I'd be curious, what you saw as kind of, to what extent you feel like there's been success in addressing that? And what do you think the key steps were?
Sure. I think that's one, as you said, that's one example of one of the, the things that we do. Um, I think another one is the professional develop- development committee that where teachers had a voice in the professional development process. So now they feel respected. Teacher's time is like gold. They don't have a lot of it for collaboration. They don't have a lot of it to engage in, you know, high leverage strategies. Whether it be co-planning, whether it be, all the things that we know they want to dig into, they don't have a lot of time to do that part of the work. Uh, so anytime that we can enable that in some way, that's, that's wonderful. Uh, so whether it be through the professional development process and giving them a voice in that where they, they strongly advocated in gateway, we need collaboration time. Fantastic. Let's figure out a structure to make that happen. And we did make that shift and it has been super well received. Uh, other places are, you know, it's identified that we need to do some diversity and inclusion work. So having an equity task force. Uh, that has, that's predominantly teacher voice with some admin voice has been a really strong leverage point to kind of bridge that gap, gap between admin and teachers. We're still doing the work. I, I would love to tell you that everything's wonderful and we're completely there. But I think those strategies were empowering teacher voice, where we're coming to the table together. Um, and, and doing it in lots of different venues, whether it's curriculum, whether it's professional development, whether it's how we structure our mentoring. Any of those, um, I think all those elements are really important. And we're still taking feedback and feedback is coming in lots of ways, whether it be a survey, whether it be um, through different stakeholder meetings, whether it be through some of the different committees that exist. But the other key pieces, we take the feedback, but we also share it back out. Uh, it's important for them to see that we are aware of what's going on. And like, for instance, if you do a professional development day and you do a survey afterwards to find out how effective it is, it's important that they see the data back. Um, that, that A, they know that you've looked at it. They know you've put it together and they know that you're recognizing that. And that that's going to be discussed in the next professional dev- development. Uh, so I think that that kind of feedback loop is one critical piece as well. Uh, but it makes people feel heard and it makes them feel respected because they're taking the time to give that feedback. Um, and that's really important. And again, we don't have a lot of time to do that kind of work. So that, that kind of helps build that respect.
So you talk about culture, professional culture, teaching administration culture, but what's student culture? We'll talk a little about how you promote, I call it student culture, student engagement as far as.
Yeah.
I mean, you've, you've heard that we've had some challenges in that way, I'm sure.
And so I think what's really exciting is that you have students already kind of engaging in one, what I would consider a, you know, evidence-based practice in that you brought in no place for hate, um, the anti-defamation leaks programming. I think that's a great starter, but I think it's making sure that we have, again, student voice represented in the same pieces. If we're collecting information from students, it's important that we also reflect that back to them so that they know we've taken the data, we've looked at it, we've taken the time to, you know, talk about that. I think it's important to have regular meetings. The district is small. We have the opportunity to have, for instance, you could do it in the high school. Um, freshman meeting, freshman class meeting, sophomore class meeting. And they're small enough that you can get some student voice in there and really have an opportunity to have a conversation. I think it's going to be important to set kind of, uh, set some of the expectations for what, what we hope to see moving forward. And I would want to work with the building administration for what are our school-wide expectations and making sure that student voice is reflected in there too. Uh, because in order to have buy-in, we need to know what they are expecting, have a sense about it. Uh, so I think those are some critical pieces. Uh, I think it's important to empower uh, building administration to really build those strong relationships with students to take the time to do that and to provide the supports needed. So for example, if a, one of the building administrators was really excited about a program that they wanted to bring in, making to, in order to help build um, culture, we would want to make sure that we provide the, the resources and allocate what's needed in order to do that. Uh, we want to encourage that kind of idea from building administrators. So I think making sure that we support building admin to do that work. Uh, but also making sure that we're continuously, again, doing that feedback loop with students. Students should see leaders at their different activities so they feel like you're invested. And then you're taking that information from them and then reflecting it back and they should start to see some of that information reflected back in the changes that they see in their school. Uh, so if we're doing a good job, that should be that feedback loop and that continuous improvement. With the understanding that we, we do have to provide and allocate the resources to do this work.
Final question. Yeah, you know, it's, uh, I, 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 as, as I was to you and, and your involvement and really in the sort of the sort of trenches, but uh, you know, we're highly involved there and it goes on. And in the superintendent's role. Are, are there things that you're going to have to shift your focus?
Sure am. I would love to say that I could do it all, but I will need to shift my focus. And that's a really fair question and I'm glad you brought it up. Um, for instance, right now I do get the opportunity to do some math intervention uh from time to time. And I anticipate that I will not be able to do that moving forward. I mean, I hope I can still integrate what I know from that into professional development work. I do hope that I can integrate that there. But I think it's going to take a different shape and I'm kind of excited to see what happens with that, uh, just taking that and of shifting the focus. But I recognize that, for instance, I'm going to be spending more time uh in meetings, whether it be superintendent's roundtable meetings, whether it be um, meetings with the commissioner of education, whether, whatever that might be, those are going to populate my calendar. Um, and in, they're important to be, to be there. It's important to be at these things representing Lennox. Um, so that's going to be a critical piece, but I also don't want it to take away from the opportunity to be in the trenches a little bit too. So it's going to be a balancing act and hopefully I'll do it really well all the time, but I'm sure I will have some growing moments and I'm excited to see what those are. I enjoy personal growth, so I look forward to getting feedback and having to make some changes and seeing where to grow.
I think we're arriving at the end of our time.
Alright.
You are off the hot. But we'd welcome any other, I'm saying, hopefully to ask something you might want to circle back to, Wayne, any other last.
So thinking about, um, you know, I've read through the Lennox um strategy plan and I have a sense about what was written and hoped for for uh by twenty twenty-six. And I'm wondering where we sit right now. What do you think would be different from, what do you think might be different from that initial strategy plan that had been worked through previously? What else do you want to see? What would be different?
Well. Or and I, and we want to go over part of the chief. Uh, and we had eight strategies, which is probably three more than we should have had. Um, in some of the areas, um, we were doing fairly well. The largest areas that, Mark is the chairman of the teaching development stuff committee. Um, and some of the biggest areas fall under the teaching and learning. And, and those um are going to take time, you know, maybe it's going to take the leadership to articulate steps for this year, steps for the next year, very specific, you know. We came, wrote that and pandemic started, it, it ended during the pandemic, I think. I don't remember exactly. Switch of superintendents on, so it wasn't, you know, but even then, several things had happened. The eighty areas, there are probably four that stuff was happening in pretty well and, um, and others that, you know. Need, need a lot, you know, but that will be something that we can, you know, talk about, review, uh, more depth about what's actually, you know. In the technology area, we made a lot of changes in, um, having power school be the platform, whether the rhetoric. We've got kids involved in, uh, those platforms, uh, that's the reviews and then.
Yeah.
Canvas, uh. And so stuff, stuff was happening there in, in, in some good directions. We changed technology directors right in the middle of the, but I think that, you know, stuff's happening there, maybe not as quickly as we would have liked. Some of the implementations have been a little bit rocky. But I think we're emerging from that now, uh, in the professional development area where, you know, we you know, we're trying to have a team in the, in the, uh, leadership area, uh, a leader or leadership teams each school. Uh, you know, so there are areas that we were definitely making good progress. Then there's areas that we'll just assess even more time. I would say the biggest thing is I just don't think we're really going to be on culture. I mean, it's well represented about our bullying. I really, I really, I just really looked at one year because we were trying to just figure out how to get a sense of where the real struggle was. But, you know, they've ultimately said that we had good policies, but the policies were not being implemented in a way that supported students. And I think, I don't know what your results were, we're talking with students, but I think until we are at a place where students are respected uh, in their identities and in their ability to learn across the board and we have clear accountability. I think some of that work has been done this year. We have leaders who have been very focused on it until we're really there. It, it's very hard for any student to come in and learn when they're facing the fact that they don't know what epithet or identity based hate speech or something is going to come at them when they walk in the door. I think we, we had a chance to meet with students as we started this process and they were really clear about saying, we want to feel like we can be safe and respected and there's going to be accountability to those who, who don't do that. And the feeling is what is happening to the people that are classing aren't. And so I think until we really have leadership across the board, one person could be handling something, another person could be handling something. But we need to assure that everybody, and that includes adults, you know, everybody that comes in the building is feeling respected. And I think there are a lot of kids that do feel safe and respected, but if you don't, that's enough to say we've got work to do. So I would say for me, that's really been the thing that is the most important. And we're never going to hit perfection on that because human beings, you know, we, we have a thing in restorative justice called hurt, say, hurt people, hurt people. Um, but how do we heal and have healed people healed? And I think for me, um, having had some training in there, that's what I want to see. Want to see us heal from the hurt and, and really step up for each other when other people are classing.
I think that's a really good point. And I, I tend to approach a lot of this work from a place of, I do better because I know better. Um, and I know better because I've received a lot of training in that where I've received, you know, I've gone through a lot of work. Whether it be identity work, pieces like that. So I think it's important to approach the work from that know better, do better standpoint instead of the blame perspective. So I'm really excited that that's an area that we're wanting to engage in.
Right. I think we've made it to the end. Thank you so much for spending a very long day with us.
You all, it was a very welcoming process. I really appreciate all the time and the energy that everyone put in. Thank you all.
Form we have driven.
We might not do, yeah, I'll look to a jerk again.
All in favor.